Good evening. I hereby call this regular meeting of the Nicholas Design SD Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that the board is present and notice that this meeting was legally posted according to Texas Open Meeting Act. Please remember, the items do not have to be taken in order shown on the agenda and please join us in turning your cell phones to silent mode. The board will now conduct an executive close session, discuss the items posted on our agenda pertaining to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act as allowed by the Texas government code sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Interactions the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now five oh one PM.
Thank you.
The Board is now reconvening to open session at 6:00 PM. Thomas J. Russ, Principal, Mrs. Paula Harshbarger will be giving the invocation tonight. And Mrs. Harshbarger, please, you will have an opportunity to introduce the students that will lead us in the pledges to the flag. Mrs. Harshbarger, thank you.
Okay, bow with me, please. Father God, we come before you this evening with hearts full of gratitude. Lord, we're just so thankful for your love and your mercy and your grace. Lord, I ask that you be with our school board and Mr. Fraley. Lord, grant them wisdom, help them to always work peaceably with one another. Lord, I ask a special blessing on the sweet students that we serve. Lord, may you always be reflected in our actions and our words. Any success, Lord, any accolades, any honors we receive, may all glory go unto you. In Jesus Christ's holy name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Okay, I'm super excited, President Neal, Board of Trustees, Mr. Fraley, to introduce our House heroes. These boys and girls, I told them they're the quietest group I've ever brought to say the pledges. And there's a reason for that, because they're House heroes. And they are chosen by their teachers unanimously based on the fact that they exhibit our school's values of safety and honesty and respect and responsibility. And so, we're super excited that they're here to say the pledge with you tonight, and I'm gonna let them introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Cameron Simpson.
I'm Susan Yentel.
I'm Valerie Santoyo.
I'm Brianna, and this is the House of Amay.
I'm Azaya.
I'm Diana.
I'm Holly Anita.
I'm Cory Daniels, and this is the House of Coryana.
I'm Adely Burke.
I'm Lester Bonilla.
I'm Nathaniel, and this is the House of Vanessa.
Yeah, Rexi.
Desiree Anthony.
I'm Arbiachella.
I'm Karina Kurulow.
And I'm Maribor Sanga, and this is the House of Respecto. Please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God and one indivisible.
Mrs. Harshbarger, before these wonderful students leave, guys, we're so proud of y'all, House heroes and follow the school values. That's tremendous job. I'd like for the board and our superintendent, let's go take a picture with them. I want to take a picture with the House heroes at TJR. So Les, will you line us up there, and we're gonna come follow, we'll stand behind. And while he's lining them up, Mr. Matoi? Thank you, Mr. Matoi, and well a great group of students. Parents, we thank you all. Will all the parents just please stand? We want to show our appreciation to you for getting your kids here and your support. Thank you all. Thank you, parents. Okay, board, we're gonna go down and take a picture there and get behind. I say to our parents and students, have a great week of vacation and get plenty of rest and look forward to seeing you after Thanksgiving holidays. Thank you. Thank you, board, and Mrs. Fraley. That brings us to our celebrations and information items. Mr. Les Lundbarger would begin with the recognition portion of the meeting.
Thank you, good evening, President Neal, board members, Interim Superintendent Fraley. Last month, we learned Fredonia Elementary and Emeline Carpenter have been named one of six statewide winners of the Parent and Family Engagement Promising Practices Award from the Parent and Family Engagement Statewide Initiative. The awards are for the school's intentional efforts to reach out and involve families and the community. Fredonia is being recognized for its Dragon Denners, and Carpenter is being recognized for its Back to School Bash and Book Bingo Literacy Night. Joining me here is Erin Windham, our Parent and Patron Assistance Center Coordinator. Erin, please come up here and introduce the Parent and Family Engagement teams from Carpenter and Fredonia.
Good evening, President Neal, board members, and Interim Superintendent Fraley. I would like at this time Ms. Weebol, Holly Elder, Katie Mungia from Fredonia to come up here, and Ms. Moore, Summer Davis, and Keisha Tutt, oh, from Carpenter, to join me up here right now. Last spring, Region Seven reached out to NISD knowing about our efforts toward intentional community and parent outreach and asked us to submit some of those promising practices to enter a statewide competition. With Dr. Jolynn Corley's help, Summer Davis at Carpenter and Katie Mungia at Fredonia prepared the entries and submitted them. This program, the statewide initiative, is a product of the Region Sixteen Education Service Center. The primary purpose was to create a database of activities that anyone could look to when needing ideas to boost family engagement. Additionally, a committee reviews all submissions and narrows them down to six school districts that have outstanding events. Fredonia and Carpenter, with their Parent and Family Engagement teams at the helm, have made great strides in intentionally welcoming parents and community into their school families. Carpenter's Back to School Bash goes out into the neighborhood, meets students where they are, bringing food, school supplies, and excitement for the new school year. Book Bingo brings families to the school for fun and games with a focus on literacy and emphasizes the joy of reading. Fredonia's Dragon Denners provide dinner, campus, parenting, and academic information paired with activities for the children at a monthly gathering at the school. There's so many more events, activities, and promising practices at these campuses and others throughout the district, so it is no surprise that Region Sixteen, whose focus is parent and family engagement, would recognize Nacogdoches Independent School District as one of the top six districts with promising practices in the state of Texas.
As Mr. Harshbarger is taking a picture, I'm just gonna make a few comments. Go ahead, please. Ms. Leinberger, Les, I'm just gonna say Les. Thank you. Staff, will you turn just for a second on behalf of the board? We want to say thank you for your commitment. You know, it's important to us and to the district that parental relationship, that parent relationship. Thank you for all the activities you've done to pull that together for our parents, because we're a team, we all work together. So thank you for your commitment, and we appreciate that. And so, let's, we appreciate you, board.
Mr. President, if I may, just, I'd like to just reiterate, and you guys make us proud, and thank you so much. It takes a lot of love, passion, dedication, hard work, beating the head against the wall, and we appreciate every bit of it and the great strides y'all are making for us.
And also, I just want to recognize one individual in this audience that used to be a former board member, and she works so hard with PTA and parental involvement. Ms. Catherine Robinson, raise your hand. I remember how she works so hard for parental relationship. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, and thank you for supporting the board. Thank you, Barbara.
She's also the reason that I ended up in Nacogdoches.
There is no superintendent report tonight. We're gonna move to public comment. Thank you for your interest in Nacogdoches ISD. We have set aside this portion of meeting to receive input from the public regarding items on the posted agenda. This is our transition plan in keeping with newly adopted House Bill 2840. Each person designed to speak must have already completed and submitted the proper public comment forms. In order to hear from us, from as many patients as possible, and live from an efficient meeting, each speaker has a maximum time of three minutes. If we have more than ten speakers, these people have a maximum of two minutes. This is a public meeting of Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees governed by the Texas Open Meetings Act and not a meeting of the public. Further, this is not the form to initiate or continue a complaint about students or staff. We have established policies and procedures for that. Speakers are reminded, comments in this forum must be directly connected to a posted agenda item. Comments to be directed to the Board of Trustees and not to the audience and to the staff. The board will not engage in or respond to comments other than to seek clarification from the superintendent where necessary. We have one speaker ready to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. Mr. Michael Martin will keep time for us, and I will notify the speaker when that time has expired. Ms. Michelle Peck, will you join us at the same?
Thank you, and good evening, President Neal, board members, and Interim Superintendent Fraley. I'm reminded by that House Bill 2840 statement, Mr. Neal, that the board has failed to provide any policy or act on any policy from that September 1st law change, and I would encourage you to take a look at that because it's caused problems in these meetings in the past. In July, I submitted two Public Information Act requests using published district protocols. Answers to both remain incomplete. The process has been frustrating, and I apologize for any frustration I directed toward Mr. Leinberger because I've learned through correspondence through Keith Bradford of the Nacogdoches County Attorney's Office and District Attorney Kelly Karcheski that board policy designates the superintendent as the district's chief public information officer. Recent correspondence through Ms. Karcheski's office indicates that board policy does not allow for me to access FERPA-protected student records through a Public Information Act request. However, the Public Information Act includes two provisions relating to student records, Sections 552026 and 552114 of the Government Code. The district's failure to provide the records I requested in July seems to contradict Section 552026, which incorporates into the Texas Public Information Act the FERPA Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act of 1974. This governs the availability of student records held by educational institutions or agencies that receive federal funds under programs administered by the federal government. It also gives parents a right to inspect their education records of their children. Further, the Texas Attorney General writes, "A record covered by subsection B shall be made available on request of the student's parents." The original request included my daughter's records. Decisions to exclude any records in the response should have been made through a ruling from the Office of the Attorney General, not by Mr. Leinberger or school attorneys. I've since met with Principal Autry directly, and he provided me some information that has been excluded from all of the records I've received from Nacogdoches ISD. It is my understanding that additional documents were submitted to the support center in response to my requests that I have not received, and I don't consider this request complete. and I don't consider this request complete. Mr. Leinberger intimates that no text messages have been exchanged between board members and Mr. Fraley. This is an ongoing request that I also submitted in July to our district. As policymakers for our district, I encourage you to examine the processes that require multiple attorneys and months for parents of children in this district to navigate. I also encourage you to impress upon your direct report to be responsive in the interest of transparency and in consideration of our state's laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peck.
Mr. Neal, it's FYI, the reference to House Bill 2840 is in the update 114, that's before the board tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, board. We're moving now to the consent agenda. Unless we move from the consent agenda, all items listed will be acted on in one motion. If there is a board member who wishes to discuss an item on the consent agenda separately, please indicate the agenda letter. It will be set aside for further discussion and separate vote. Board, at this time, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion to second to approve consent agenda that's presented and a further discussion. All in favor, it's a sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The consent agenda is approved. The unanimous decision. Well, now, we'll move to discussion, action agenda items. Consider approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, the number one to the contract with WRL, general contractors. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Fraley to start us there.
Thank you, Mr. President. Trustees, we approved the Construction Manager at Risk process for the bond that was passed in 2018, and we have been working through a guaranteed maximum price with WRL, and I'm glad to see you guys here tonight, and PBK Architect. We also have been working with individual projects such as the Press Box. And what we've noticed is here and a number of other places, the pricing has been a little bit challenging. We gotta make some adjustments at the university with some of their projects as well. And particularly, the Press Boxes come in beyond what we wanted to pay in. Whereas we can do it, I do recommend that we hold off on that because our three main projects, for me, would be the Carpenter rebuild, the New CTE building and renovation of the high school, and the McMichael renovations. And whereas I'm very confident that everything we've talked about will get done, I want to make certain we get these three projects under contract. And operating from what I call plan for the worst, hope for the best, we are proposing to combine all three projects into one guaranteed maximum price proposal so that should a project, and I can see that right now we have a couple that may come in maybe a little bit under, that if there's a need, you can even more easily move funds from one project to the next while still maintaining the integrity of each project without having to go back with separate action or have each project stand alone. We think we can get some leverage with economies of scale and I think a more favorable bidding environment with them all being bundled together. And so, right now, what we have on a GMP is a number, I think you can pack it behind the, one of the tabs there, of forty-nine, put my glasses on, forty-nine million, seven hundred fifty-four thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars. And work right now has that number a little bit beyond what those three projects were allocated, although I do believe that we do have the funds for those projects. But this is the worst-case scenario, and one of these projects bid and get them under contract as a guaranteed maximum price, which we know that's the guaranteed maximum price. I have every confidence that they're gonna come in below that because there's a lot of work to do. But we want to get these projects bid and get the ball rolling because pricing will be going one direction. Longer the delay, the more risk we create for these projects, and I want to do that. So, we have Mr. Valan from PBK, you want to talk about this a little bit, and Dr. Ariel as well. But all your questions, we can talk those specifically. But I know that, from my experience and from looking at numbers-wise, I'm very confident that every project will be done. We have the resource for each project to be done. Worst-case scenario, as I said, Monday, the worst-case scenario is we wouldn't do the Press Box perhaps if those funds needed somewhere else. I don't think that's gonna be the case, but worst-case scenario, again, I said, we plan for the worst, hope for the best. But because we want, I want to get these things, these projects rolling now into contract, construction to begin, where we are right now would require us to look at a four million dollar or so delta there between what we currently thought we allocated and what these are coming in at right now.
We're gonna ask the people, will you come and share a little bit with us, talk to us? We appreciate that.
And also, I've asked members of the Seabrick, if they could be here to be here tonight as well, so they can get the first-hand information about it. We'll be talking about these things with them at some point, but I want them here tonight, kind of where we are.
I have one question. You know, we look at these guaranteed amounts, and I know and I feel like it'll come under there. So, what happens to most money once it come under?
Yes, sir. So, there are contingencies built within this GMP for all three of the projects. Any of the unused funds within a contingency or any unused funds within the GMP, whether or not there's savings within contracts that haven't been written yet by WRL to their subcontractors, one hundred percent of unused funds comes back to the district and then either is back into the bond program or to be used as the district sees fit.
Thank you. Thank you. It's good news.
Mr. President, regardless of, regardless of the outcome, we are still gonna improve the Press Box facility, correct?
I do believe that we'll have adequate resources to do that. Basically, you've seen the analogy of the big rocks, little rocks. I want to put the big rocks in the bucket first, and then we'll let the little rocks come in. And I think these are three of our biggest rocks.
You know, I've got some big concerns on this. Of course, I want to give you a chance to make any presentation you do before I kind of start in on my questions here, so I don't want to jump the gun.
I'm sorry, I don't have a presentation today. We have the GMP in front of you.
Yeah, listen to that.
GMP document in front of you also.
All right. I wanted to make sure that I gave everybody the chance to say what they, what they wanted to say. You know, first, I want to say, you know, we knew this was coming, but we literally got these numbers when we walked in the meetings there. At least that was my experience. Don't know for the rest of you guys, and I understand that y'all have been crunching, and I'm not saying that in a negative way at all. I know y'all have been working hard to get these numbers down, so don't, don't misinterpret that. But with that said, you know, I think you gotta give us a little while to get comfortable with things, especially when you're talking about, you know, basically a fifty million dollar outlay here locally. When I run these numbers and I put these numbers together here based on what we told the community, and, Mr. Fraley, what I'm looking at is kind of the handout that we gave to the community to say, this is, this is what we're asking for and this is what we're gonna do with these funds. And right before the meeting, I kind of added up Carpenter, the McMichael, and the CTE projects because those are the three we're talking about. And the number that I come up with that we anticipated and we told the community, you give us, I'm just gonna round and say forty-eight million dollars and we'll get these projects done. The budget increase that I'm seeing here, the difference between that and what, what we're asking for, looking at right now, is one million, six hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. That, that's a lot. And, and my concern is, if you compare that to what you're saying about the Press Box, but if you compare that to the Press Box, Press Box budget of one point four million, not only does it take away the Press Box, it's more than just the Press Box. So, I'm not saying that I'm, I'm against this. I'm saying I feel like I really need some more time and some more discussion to understand these numbers and feel good about what you're asking us to do.
Well, and, and Ms. Peck, that is why we have the meeting tonight.
Right.
We have to have it posted, we must discuss it publicly. What we do know right now is we've had two projects that have come in under budget. One would be transportation, about one point two million dollars under budget. We had one point five Carpenter land purchase, and we still have over six hundred thousand, over seven hundred thousand for that as well. So, we're already whittling down this, that amount.
Well, and that was gonna be one of my questions. I knew we had some savings on the transportation project, but I didn't, I couldn't, I didn't have that in my finger, in tip of my finger today, so that's one point.
With transportation, corporate projects already done in terms of land, we've already whittled that number down quite a bit in terms of what resources we have available, okay? I know that we have other projects in there that I think will come in under budget. I think that some of the projects, even within this, we have more funds allocated than are being, than are being included in, in the cost. So, we've included in this price for McMichael. Then we began at a fourteen point seven million dollar ask on that page, because I have the, this page one, one we gave to the community as well.
Right, I remember that. That was the PowerPoint, correct?
Correct. And the sixteen million dollar price tag on McMichael includes the HVAC, which we'd allocated four point one million dollars for. It includes the roofing, which we'd allocated five hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars for. So, you had available for McMichael about really eighteen million. This price is going into sixteen point six million.
Okay, and the sheet that I'm looking, so let me take, so you're, because the sheet I'm looking at puts the McMichael project at fourteen point seven.
Right. And then on the priority maintenance, you have a four point one million for HVAC and five hundred ninety-nine thousand roof repair. That's on, the one that looks like this, that's on the priority maintenance project.
Okay.
And so, I'm looking at all of these numbers together, because I see that we have a seventy-seven point nine million in the bucket.
Right. Well, right, I get that.
But I want to get these big rocks done first, but I know we have a lot of smaller rocks that are gonna take up whatever worst-case scenario is gonna appear that will last. I really do believe, and again, I'm not making a solemn vow, but my experience with this and just knowing how this stuff works, I do have confidence that we can take care of the small rocks, but I want to get the big rocks first.
And I totally agree with that approach. Don't get me wrong.
No, we're fine.
I'm just trying to hold the integrity of our commitment to the community and trying to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a corner. Where we're not able to deliver what our pledge was. Let me ask, have, has the Seabrick had an opportunity to review this? I would assume not because these numbers are literally right hot off the press, correct?
And, and the rule of the Seabrick really is not to approve in advance, it's to verify that we've done what we said we're gonna do. I've asked them to come tonight to hear these deliberations so that when they get the report later on, they've been part of this as well. This is for the board to decide and determine what we're gonna do. And, but Seabrick, I want you guys to know what's going on as well.
When you, when you talk about the cost of steel and lumber, is the volatility, you want to speak to that a little bit about where?
Yes, sir. So, so some of the areas that we identify as cost escalation to original budgets are, one is steel, steel tariffs that have hit within the last, within the last three years, and I know this program isn't a study of three years, we've gone up as much as twenty percent. We have other, other districts in the state where we're actually discussing some of the same issues with whether it's steel increases that are driving increases in construction costs, hyperactive markets where we have limited sub and limited sub inputs. And then, when you, when you move to a rural area, that actually becomes a little bit more of an impact than it does even in metropolitan areas. So, we have, we have those issues as well as just construction cost inflation. Some of that is inflation, but those are premiums on top of standard construction cost inflation.
But as Mr. Fraley is recommending, we bundle those three projects. They are capstone projects. We want to make sure they are completed. Emeline Carpenter School, my Michael Middle School additions, and the high school keep renovations. So, we bundle them together.
Yes, sir.
If we purchase steel, that impact the, all of the pricing?
It does. It also creates a, and by bundling, bundling them together, it doesn't create an economy of scale also. So, as you have bigger projects, your unit cost of whatever subject we're talking about does, does come down. And another, just another point about the numbers being rather fresh, that, that is due to the fact that even this, earlier this week, we had numbers that have, they've been bettered by WRL just by talking with their subs, looking for other ways to have cost reductions, and we brought the number down actually by a little bit over about a million bucks since, since the first of the week.
Yeah. I'd heard that y'all have been working hard to get that number down.
Extremely hard.
Kudos, kudos to you guys on that.
Thank you, and a lot of that credit goes to WRL also, and that effort is going to continue. So, there's a continued effort there, and as Mr. Fraley is, is pointing out, this is a guaranteed maximum price. When you have a guaranteed maximum price, as I mentioned earlier, any continued savings that we can find, not only unused contingencies, but also continued cost reduction efforts, which we will continue with WRL, one hundred percent of that comes back to the board, or comes back to the school board.
Anything else I want to point out is, is with the Transportation Center and the Carpenter land savings, purchase savings, we're already about halfway through the difference between what we say we would need for these projects. And thus, we still have a lot more whittling to do.
Sure. Well, and I know we've, we've got a lot more projects on the table too, so like I said, I just want to make sure we're, we're in a position where we can be nimble and respond correctly. You said the, the savings on the transportation, was it right at one point two million?
Something like that. Is that brother rule, is that about right? I think that's, y'all have already approved that contract.
Yeah, I remember that. A little, more, a little more than one point two or?
I think it's about one point six.
One point six, you say? Okay, even better.
We're thinking one point six savings, so that would, that would kind of cancel this out then.
It, it gets pretty close. It gets pretty close. And, and again, in those projects, Carpenter land is purchased, Transportation Center contract has been approved. These three, once they're approved, we're, we're over halfway there with the, with the projected difference of what we have allocated and what they said the pricing is coming in at. We'll still save more funds. We have a lot of soft costs, contingencies built in. And I don't know if you're not, but if I'm WRL, this is GMP, I'm making certain.
Oh, yeah. This is worst-case scenario. I totally understand that.
So, if I'm them, I'm certainly gonna make certain that there's room in there and, and it's really gonna be a celebration for everybody, I think, to bring this in. I've seen this team respect this community, and they're working hard to try to maintain it. And I know that there have been questions in the past that have been earned questions of our things, but we're taking care of the big rocks first. And we will find, we will get the resource, we have the resources that will be there for the other things, but these things are just, we must have these things. But I'm very confident that everything that we put on the bond proposal will be taken care of.
Well, just even in this discussion tonight, I feel a lot better, you know, just in, if we've got, like I said, I didn't, didn't have the numbers, so I couldn't put my finger on the numbers, but if we've got that much in transportation savings alone, that equals it out and makes it, makes it a little bit more. You can see it. Say that one more time for me, Mr. Lee.
One million, five hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars.
All right.
And that's, that contract has already been signed and approved.
So, we're good to go there.
So, with the Carpenter six hundred thousand dollars, say it was there about, we're already over halfway there. And that, and that still allows a Press Box.
True. It's a big decision. I'd love to hear somebody else weigh in or, you know, for me, I love to chew on things like this. I'm not real good at just, especially when you're talking about something this big, so, but would be curious how the, my fellow members feel.
Well, I'm feeling like, what would be the other option for us, so if we're trying to save some money? I mean, we don't seem to have another option at this point. So, for me, if it's, if it's an added money that we can possibly get back, it's better than possibly losing money. You know, if we don't have this in place, because then worse.
Well, I remember we, yeah, well, we've, and that's the, the type of contract we work under though, is, is that Construction Manager at Risk. So, no matter what, we'll, if, if there's savings, we'll get it back, so that's a, that's a given.
But what I like about this is also where you're talking about that if the costs go up, it's all included in the whole projects, not just in one project and another project and another project, so we kind of save there. So, I kind of like that aspect of it, so that'd be my, that's where I'm coming from.
Yes.
I see there's a safety net, I think, you know, we would.
It'd be nice to lock it in.
Yeah. I see it as a safety net, but.
I, I mean, I had some of your same concerns today, and I did, you know, call and ask a few questions. And I was brought up to speed. Anyway, I do, I do feel better about the numbers being locked in. I mean, just being reassured that we still have individual budgets for each project, so we can monitor that and make sure that, you know, we're keeping, you know, true to each, each school and each thing that we committed to, that we're gonna hit those things as long as none of that gets lost. I mean, that's kind of where I was concerned earlier. But, you know, even since you've been talking and we've had some other discussion, I feel, I feel a bit more comfortable about it too.
Well, and also, we've got a lot of information, the sheet you shared, the sheet that we, with the PowerPoint. And Seabrick is gonna tell us, did we did or we didn't. And, and I'm not gonna have my name all over this. And, and I'm not going to have my name all over this and not have it done right, whether I'm in this chair or not. I'm still assistant of this state, and I'm still going to be making certain that my name behind this is, 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 is good. But this, this is just a safety net, a strategy, a game plan, just to lock in these three big rocks. There are a couple others on here we need to look at as well. I mean, Fredonia is very important, and we'll, we'll take care of that as well. And any savings that we generate, which I do anticipate, will, will make up the difference. And again, just worst-case scenario, and I don't see this happening at all, if we have to use fund balance for something, we're very healthy. We have a policy of three months, we're ready about four or five months, saving in our fund balance. So we're, we're way beyond that. And we've paid for other projects already too.
Absolutely. And when you start talking about, that's a big difference, which we talked about a one point six million dollar increase. But then when you take that one point five million savings out, then, like I said, that gives me, that gives me some comfort. You know, because we know we've, we've got that project taken care of.
I think those numbers are kind of what was the turning point, was seeing the, the numbers. We didn't see them, so it was kind of a little nerve-wracking.
Me too. We've been working on these all day long.
What are you thinking on this, Mr. Nirmann?
Just by doing this, my colleague, we have another choice, go independent, each project by itself. However, I like the direction we are going, because if one goes under, one goes above, they can compensate each other, so we don't have to go independently.
True.
And again, we're confident that this will work. WRL wouldn't sound like one if they couldn't. They've already signed the documents, so we're good. But I do believe that we'll have some additional savings identified along the way, and we'll still have fidelity with the remaining projects also. The remainder are against Fredonia renovations, our conversion, then we have a lot of party maintenance things. And so this forty-nine million out of seventy-seven million, with some of the money's already, projects are already, already taken care of. We're in a much better shape than a lot of other places.
True.
I think that integrity is above most important, but I think we have a plan that will save us money. And if we don't act on our plan, then we're going to not save that money. And that savings can make the difference. All these can be completed with integrity. So I think we should move forward and give the people that know what they're doing to move the money around as they need to do, and we're still guaranteed funds.
Mr. Neal.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve amendment number one to the contract with WRL General Contractors to establish the guaranteed maximum price for the construction of Emmeline Carpenter Elementary School to rebuild McMichael Middle School additions and renovations, the Nakadochas High School CTE renovations, and the Malcolm Rector CTE Center at the Nakadochas High School in the amount forty-nine million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, as described as amendment number one.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Board, any further discussion?
Including the date, eleven.
The date being eleven twenty-one nineteen.
Yes. We have a motion, Pastor Urban, a second from Dr. Gromon, and a further discussion, board? All in favor of the motion, would you please raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passed for null, say, and, and I just want to make one comment here, Mr. Fraley. The bottom line, these projects are an investment in our students for years to come, and just years to come down the line. Emmeline Carpenter School, Mike Michael Middle School, Nakadochas High School, Kade renovations, and Malcolm Rector. I just can see the future of our students, what, this is just tremendous for our kids, for many years to come. So it's an investment in our students. So thank you, board. Thank you very much.
If I could add, I received two phone calls from two boardrooms today. And I kind of choke because I'm at my desk with all of it in front of me, and they're asking the same questions that I've just been, been, been calculating and working through. So we're, we're on the same page. It's been, it's been a very challenging experience. I know WRL and PBK and Brother LaRue and our guys and Brother Martin, they have really been sweating this. But at the end of the day, they've come down with something that I know we can take care of. I know we can take care of it. And I want to thank the board and Ms. Barwick as well for the financial management that gives us, me a lot more confidence. But I think we're going to be okay within what we, within the referendum allocations. I feel, if, if we maintain this type of teamwork and focus, I feel very confident.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
It's my commitment. Thank you all. Yes, by all means, board. Thank you all.
Next on the general board is item B, consideration annual school district audit for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Ms. Barwick, we turn it over to you, ma'am.
Good evening, President Neal, board members, and I'm Superintendent Fraley. We have come to a close of our, our audit for prior school year as state requires. And the state also requires that the board here report on the findings of that. So we have Darla Dear with our auditors to present that report.
Good evening. I'm Darla Dear with Belt Harris Pahatchek, here to present your annual financial report. So I basically will go over about the three most important pages out of the audit. And then if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have on the audit.
Thank you.
So if you'll flip with me to page five. This is the page that we consider the most important in the audit. It's your opinion page, and you've received an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level of assurance that you can receive, that there are no material misstatements and all disclosures made in, made in your audit. So great job on that. So we're going to flip to page twenty-seven, and we're going to take a look at your general fund revenue and expenditures. You'll notice in your general fund column on row, on line fifty-twenty, total revenues. Total revenues for the year, fifty-three million, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Down on your total expenditure line, that's sixty-thirty, you'll see that the total expenditures for the year, fifty-two million, one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. There were a little bit of other financing sources and uses that left you, that was a total of three thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, leaving you a net change in your fund balance of nine hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. Ending fund balance, twenty-nine million, four hundred and eight thousand, four hundred dollars. So great job on the positive increase on fund balance and nice, healthy fund balance you've got there. So I'm going to flip you over to page sixty-six. We're going to take a look at your budget. And when we're looking at the budget, that's basically, it's kind of the goals set out by the board. And so what we're looking for on that, or what we would not be looking for, would any be negative variance, showing that it's something would be over budget. If you'll notice, under your expenditure columns, in that far right-hand column, every one of your expenditures has a positive variance, which shows that you're coming in under budget. So if you're flipping over to page sixty-seven, you'll see on your total expenditure line item that it came well under budget of the five million, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So great job on coming in under budget on those under, numbers. Now that's basically the three most important pages, giving you your change in fund balance, and a little looking at that budget. But I'll also be happy to answer any questions that you might have on your, on your audit.
Mr. President, if I could add, want to talk about that finding that we had, we discussed money that no longer is there? I mean, I want my banker friend to smile at us about that.
We had an audit adjustment in our, our construction and facility acquisitions account that was an error of about one point two million dollars. Originally, it was showing, we had our fund, our function eighty-one was over budget by about eighty thousand dollars. But once that was corrected, we now have a plus in our fund balance of nine hundred, over nine hundred thousand dollars, and the audit funding went away. Which I was, when I, when I first heard that we went over, I was shocked. I was like, how could that possibly be? Because I knew that we were under budget by about a million. So, anyway. So we just followed through on that and we got it corrected.
Thank you for that.
And I would just ask the board to think back to about two thousand and eleven. What was your financial outlook? So Ms. Barwick, you and your team, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
And let's thank the state legislature for the extra, extra funding we received this year too.
You'll see that maybe in the next audit. This, this is on us right now. Your team is doing a great job.
Yeah, really, y'all did a great job. Great job to your fund balance.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Ms. Barwick, again, to your staff and to all the campus principals, the entire group, it goes way down. All the work of teachers and staff and the budget process. Thank you. And we, let the board know, we appreciate them and the work they've done. Thank you very much. Board, can we have a motion at this time?
Yes, Mr. President. I move the board approve the annual financial report fiscal twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Mr. Fashi, Nirmann, we have a second?
I second the motion.
Pastor Urban. Motion second, approve of the financial audit at this time for twenty eighteen, nineteen. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Raise your right hand and say nay. Any other decision? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't need anything, please let us know. We're always happy to help you.
Thank you. Thank you. What we moved to the next item is consideration proposals from search firms for superintendent schools and action to retain the firm. But before we get into that, I want to take just a minute and look to my left and say, Mr. Fraley, thank you. Thank you for coming. And I, I remember calling this man, he was on vacation and retirement, and that's what you consider coming and spending a little time with Nakadochas ISD. It's a certain outcome and take a look. And it's for a short period of time. It's been longer than that. How many months has it been?
Who's counting? Nineteen months, twenty, twenty days, thirty-five seconds. Take it easy.
Well, Mr. Fraley, we want to say to you, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for the commitment to our students and what you've done for this community. You know, we look back and reflect on this board and with you, a team of one. You taught us how to be a good school board. And we thank you for that. And we thank you for years to come, all that you've done in this school district. And, and the bond proposal. Thank you, community, for your support of the school district for years to come. And thank for this man's leadership. You know, we, the next part we're about to do, we're just not ready to say bye, you know. But we, we really appreciate you. Mr. Fraley, if you want to say, board, anybody?
I, I just, I would just like to say that it's been a privilege to, to work with you. I've learned a lot from you, and, you know, I'm very vocal, so I've always had to be vocal, and I've had to be vocal.
I haven't noticed that.
You've been, you've been, you've been really supportive, and you have brought this board together, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Neal.
Yes, sir.
I think it was one month after I got on the board that I visited with Mr. Fraley, Ms. Fitch, and I visited. And I got the impression that we're going to go right direction, and we're going to be blessed, and we're happy.
Thank you. Thank you. Board, anyone else?
Mr. Fraley, I'll, I'll just say thank you for being patient with me, as I've learned my, my role and what to do, and my many phone calls and, and questions. And thank you for that patience, and thank you for teaching. And I appreciate that. I've enjoyed being a part of this, this group. And it does feel like a body of one. And, and between you and Ms. Fitch last year making that come together, I appreciate that. And I appreciate what you've done for the, the community, because a year and a half ago, when I was in those chairs, it wasn't, it wasn't like this. And I appreciate the, what you, the leadership that you've brought to this group, and I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I want to say that you're like an icebreaker, but there's a lot of propellers out here that will, and, and up here, that been behind you. And we're glad we're behind you, because we've all gained because of your presence here. And thank you very much. So keep going, propellers.
And was it Kay Douglas that said, what a difference a year makes? So, you know, we sincerely appreciate you taking time off of your retirement to come help us build a solid foundation, and a foundation that I am confident is, is going to lead us to a very bright future.
I think so. I think so.
And I may say, it's a big shoes to be filled.
Yes.
I appreciate that. If I may, you know, this sounds like, I'm still going to be here for a few more months. We talked about that tonight, so this is not goodbye. This is just kind of getting ready for it, and I'm not going to goodbye this anyway. But I took that call and said yes before I talked to my wife about it. And she has been, been just a tremendous, a champion in, in this process. But the blessing really is mine. I knew Mr. Neal, but I didn't know the rest of you guys. And I feel like, I feel blessed, blessed to have met each of you. We've talked through some things, we worked through some things. And I feel, feel like, you know, you taught me, I think I've grown as well. And I've got to talk about my team, you know, just, as I say, I, I come here and you hear all this rhetoric about how bad people are and how incompetent they are in, in Nakadochas ISD, and I have not found that at all. We didn't have a bunch of terminations at all, but the results have changed. The quality of the work, I think, is recognized and appreciated, and also facilitated. It takes all of that. And because of that, and we didn't have a big principal's turnover this year, our schools, where the power needs to be, are in great shape because of the leaders we have. And we've all grown, and I've done some preaching, I've done some coaching. I may have stepped on its toe or two, but because I do believe in the folks we have and their capacity, and I have been very, very pleased. And having Dr. Hill join us as well, you had options, and I had to grab you first, because I saw what you could do. And yes, we moved a little cheese, but some, some would need to be moved, and our kids have benefited from it. We're not focusing on test score, focusing on environmental issues, and giving our kids the best place, possible chances to learn. It's going to take all of us again, working together, those propellers. Dr. Grom, it's a good analogy, you know. I've done what I've done with your permission, board. I've done what I've done with your permission. If you haven't understood and, and allowed it, sometimes you trust me, sometimes you just allow it. But because of your allowing and your trusting, you facilitated a lot of the work. And so I appreciate the recognition, but it is not all mine. As we've talked before, you've made choices of how you want to conduct business, and you've made choices that have made things work very, very well here. And I really appreciate that, you guys. And so the blessing is I've met, and my last board to work with, I hope, is ending on a very high note, a very high note. And for me, that's a blessing. And I will say to you, there is a high probability that your future superintendent is watching this, or will watch this. And we'll say to them that you have a good board to work with, and so hopefully you will bring your A-game and work with them and gain their confidence and, and deliver for this community, this intrinsical community. I have folks I've met here that I feel like, like I'm friends with now, that I would not have known had I not come here. Okay? And so the blessing is mine, and God works in mysterious ways, because I didn't have, it was on my radar screen. I'm glad, I'm glad it happened. So thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Fraley, and thank you, board. The item is consideration proposal for a search firm for the superintendent of schools and action to retain the firm. I want to begin first by thanking Kelly Kaczeski, who's working with us as our attorney. And what we did as a board is that we sent out for our inquiries, requests for qualifications. And we received maybe two top firms in, in the state, and, and I want to thank Kelly for that. And those two firms, Arrow Firm and Texas Association School Boards, they presented to our board this past Monday in our general review. They came and made wonderful presentations. They both were outstanding based on what I, what I saw. And I just want to remind the board that I guess the most, single most important job we have as a board is to hire a superintendent. It's critical that we hire a superintendent. This is, is, is one of my, maybe our most important job. You know, as we look at these firms in just a minute, board, I'm going to open it up and give you a chance to talk about these different firms before we make some decisions. But, you know, looking at the firms out, I was looking for that, that commitment to, you know, as we look at a firm that will stay with us all the way through the process, hold our hands through the process and work with us through that process in recruiting, selection for, uh, superintendents. One of the things, I'm hoping that the firms are, the firms are also looking at both these firms, committed to community involvement, for his commitment to profile. The board, they will help a board develop a profile, hoping they get input from, they'll get input from the community. And that could be in, in a way that could be electronically done, or it could be in the group. But I want to, you know, they were all, both were outstanding. It's going to be a tough decision. So I'm going to stop here and come back later and open to the board, and ask them to make. comments of their observations of the two firms before we make a recommendation. So, board, I'm opening it to you.
I wanted to say that we had two fine presentations. They certainly could meet our needs. But when we got some additional information and one has four processes going on right now and the other is fully available, that certainly sways me that they can give one hundred percent of their attention to our needs in a very professional way. So we have to make a choice. It's just like when we choose a mate, you know? This is similar, this is similar because we're gonna marry this superintendent. So this is just a search form to get us to this superintendent. And I think either one could, but I think one, when they get one hundred percent of their time, makes a difference.
I'd just like to say that in having them give us the presentations, because, you know, I guess that day I woke up and I had a lot of questions. And so I asked a lot of questions and I think they gave us great answers. I was impressed by both of them. However, like Dr. Roman says, we have to make a decision because we're the ones gonna be put in the hot spot. I mean, we gotta have some support. So, and I think that either one of those organizations will give us that support. But I like the fact that one of the groups was just two people that are gonna be close with us and instead of knowing, we're gonna know who we're working with. And I kinda like that aspect of it.
I'll tell you guys, when we were entering that process and, you know, knew we had these two firms presenting to us, my initial inclination was that I would probably prefer the nonprofit, nonpartisan leg of it. But after hearing the presentations and sitting through that, I think the private firm there made some very compelling presentation. And their knowledge of East Texas, I think, would bode well for us. And, you know, I come down to it, I thought about this a lot throughout the week. It's something we say a lot at my office and it's people buy from people. And those relationships and the type of relationships you're building with those candidates and, you know, it's, we're trying to recruit a really good person here. And, you know, I felt really good that Arrow was gonna really work on developing those personal relationships. And like I said, that the connections and the knowledge of the East Texas environment really won me over.
Thank you.
Ms. Neal? We're a group of people, independent thinker. However, we all have the same means, goals, purpose, and vision, which is finding a superintendent which is very capable, follow the guidelines that we have set for us. And we like our students to be well-educated in a safe environment and get the best education. We like to have quality teachers. We like to have facilities up to par, to the point that we'd be inviting from outsiders. And at the same time, I did my homework as well as my colleagues did, and I came to the same conclusion. To hire a firm that's mostly on East Texas, North Texas, the environment that we all live in, are very familiar, the type of people we have, the condition that we have, and where have been and where we are now, it will be very much inviting for them.
Thank you.
And if there is any other questions or comments, it is not allowed to make a motion.
I mean, I was just gonna say, today I did sit down and visit with a retired superintendent at the hospital, who volunteers there. And I really respect his opinions and his experience. And he has worked with both firms. He said, we will be happy no matter which way we go. He had nothing negative to say. So honestly, it comes down to, you know, who we're comfortable with. And I don't think that either way, we're gonna go wrong. So I, you know, I just, I guess that's kinda where I'm sitting on that, just throwing that out there. There was, there's really nothing I could find negative either way, so.
I feel that way, too. I don't think either one of these is a bad decision. True.
And same as I, I thought they were both well-represented, well did a job. And I really like Arrow Firm because of the, as many you mentioned, for me, around with the environment here. These guys have worked in the area, college, university, worked in other school districts in the area. And they have a history of working in this area, selecting superintendents. So I'm gonna go back to Mr. Nirman, board, if you're okay.
Yes, Mr. President. I move the NACADOTCHAS ISD Board of Trustees, Retained Services of Arrow Firm, for the purpose of assisting the board with the selection of a superintendent of schools and authorize the board president to execute the required agreement, if any, on behalf of the school board.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion second to acquire the services of Arrow and our search for our superintendent. Board, any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, using unanimous position to Arrow. Thank you, Ms. Kelly, if you will let them know that. Thank you. Thank you, board. Next item on the agenda is Tazby Report. Dr. Roman, our secretary, is representing us and he's doing a great job in representing us on the Tazby Leadership Institute. And so there are times he will go and meet, he's gonna give us a brief, brief report.
This is gonna be brief, brief, not brief. Dr. Roman is here from El Tazby and it's an honor and I thank you for allowing me to be a part of such an interesting and educational learning experience. We're gonna talk a little bit about the nuts and bolts of El Tazby and some pearls, maybe we'll even string some pearls. So there's thirty-six total. I put a picture out there. On Thursday, we showed up last week, it was a twelve-hour day. Friday was a fourteen-hour day. This is from in the bus to when you get to leave and go for your room. Saturday was four point five hours and it's supposed to be like three and a half. Okay, so Thursday, we went to Aleve. And oh my goodness, I want you to know that there were so many things to learn. They had a giant CTE building. But what they had is they had a Mandarin Chinese immersion program. And they had all these children speaking Chinese in kindergarten in unison. It was a most amazing thing. And this is also an amazing thing. This right here is the annual report and it's a calendar. So every year, every month, you see something new. They use that for, so, okay, Aleve, I can't even begin to tell you the people that were with me that are from little districts because I was in awe when you'd see twelve welders sitting in a row in this giant room in the CTE. It was just incredible. So that takes me to this leadership challenge. This is the biggest book out of six books. You have to get there early if you want the book you want. I was there at first. I won't tell you what time I got there. But we formed a little group in the beginning, at the front of the line, because we all wanted to work together. And so we did. So we do a scholarly critical review of this book and apply it to schools work, school board work. The people on my, in my group, just so that you have some idea of what's going on, we have one from Klein with fifty-four thousand, Capel with thirteen point two thousand, Midlothian up near Dallas Fort Worth for nine point eight thousand, NAC with six point four thousand, Huffman outside of Houston, three point six thousand, and Thrall with seven hundred and sixty. They started the year with seven sixty-two, but they lost two. Now, HISD is represented with over two hundred thousand students. And one of the smallest ones, I called up JT Penn today to find out exactly, they have two hundred and one. Okay, so why did I choose this book? Because this man recommended it. He was out of, I surveyed several of the administrators and he read this book and nobody else did. And I said, hmm. So that's what got me on this team. So thank you, Mr. Fraley. I have finished the book for the first time. It's very challenging and very educational. Okay, now, we did have a review on the first day, twelve-hour day. And I did this review, we started this review with my group. But I also gave a, what's called a hometown news about NACADOTCHAS. And so I got seven minutes with eight slides. And so I want to thank all the people that helped me do that. That's the NAC Visitors Bureau, the mayor's office, NAC CTE Media and Marketing, AD Construction and Manufacturing CTE Students, the yearbook or journalism photography that gave me some of the slides. People were amazed at our slides. Okay? So ended up my talk with a presentation from our mayor to El Tazby. And it floored Dr. Rutherford. I don't think that's ever been done in all the years at Tazby. Well, we can thank our mayor for that. Now, at the end of the day, I had an auxiliary event, this is when we're free time, kinda like now. We, I gave out the Good Witch Award. There were some people that didn't show up because of the flood in Houston the last time. And so this is an award for extreme persistence and not dropping out of our class. So Friday, we went to Cypress Fairbanks. This is gonna be fast. There's a lot to see there. I want to tell you, they have fifty-six elementary schools, twelve high schools, eighteen middle schools, and five special programs. So I've got a couple billion things to tell you about. Oh, this bond program they passed was one point seven six two billion dollars. And like, okay, anything they build over here, they give over there, they put it over there, too. Everything's equal. And I only had one more thing to show you out of this. They had fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ten volunteers. They gave one quarter of a million hours volunteering in their school. That's what makes you strong, when you have those people engaged. Okay, well, I could tell you a lot more about Cy Fair, but we don't need to know more about that. This is the most interesting one. Stafford MSD Municipal School District, it's the only one in the state. It was the smallest school we went to. And it's just a little smaller than we are. I want to tell you that I went to the intermediate school with one other board member with two gold coat young ladies. One was a junior, one was a sophomore. They told us everything about the school as we're walking down the hall. But we want to go see if somewhere in the future, we want to change the way we sort our students. Maybe we want to put fifth and sixth graders in their own school, an intermediate school. That's what they had. So we went there. Well, I was very interested in asking those students, what do you like about this? What do you wish was different? And you know what the boys said in the sixth grade? We want to be in the junior highs so we can play sports. And we said, well, you can't play sports in the sixth grade, that's seventh grade. Oh, well, I asked them about how safe they felt. And I said, you don't feel like if you moved up, you'd have some problems? And you know what they said? I will not allow anybody to bully me. And we adopted tonight a program, Expect Respect. Expect Respect. And I think this is something that we need to reinforce with our own students, regardless of what age they are. So this is something, I'm on the last page. Now, would you jump over a fence to go to school? Well, the people that are in Fort Bend, we drove down the street and came back down it. The doctor lady that was telling us about this school, he said, everybody over here, that's Fort Bend. But the, some of the kids over there jumped the fence and come to Stafford and they don't go to Bend. And if anybody knows about school districts, Fort Bend's a good one. So I hope we can have some kids jump climbing over fences to come to our schools. And I think they're starting to do that, Dr. Crespo, I really do. And they jump over fences for people and what we have to offer. Because you know the thing about Stafford, they didn't have the giant CTE building that Aleve had. And they didn't have the, everything's equal. But you know what they had? They had people. And people make the difference. Facilities are important, but it's the people that make the difference. So on the last day, we finished up a lot of things, but we had Matt Robinson, MD, from the State Board of Education, come and talk to us. And he shared with us, answered a lot of questions, went overtime and, well, last thing. When I was there, there was so much information. I wrote down two things. I wrote down, high functioning board. That's what they said in all these places, that's the bottom line. If you have a high functioning board, you can have it like this. I think we have a high functioning board. All board members are growing. They're growing in their abilities to govern and do the financial part of what's required here. So, you know, I think that in learning about those places, I learned much about here. And so I guess that concludes my report. But I have to take this with me because there's, JT Penn's gonna get that, he missed our last meeting. So we want him to stay in our color. Any questions?
Yes, I missed all the numbers you mentioned.
What numbers? Oh, did you want number? I did forget my numbers. I'm sorry. Five, three, and two. These are the numbers I used in my presentation. About fifty percent of our kids are Hispanic, thirty percent are African-American, and twenty percent are Anglo. About. Over eighty percent of our children are economically disadvantaged. And one hundred percent of our children are offered free breakfast and lunch daily. That's your numbers, you can remember them. Thank you.
The number, I was asking for number of population of each campus. Never. Just joking.
We want to thank, we want to thank Dr. Roman as he continued to go through the process. He'll provide the report. And thank you for the great information. And certainly that experience has helped him grow as a board member and also bring back to us, help us grow. Board, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I was gonna say, Mendy would give us a summary.
I do have a motion.
Would you, Mendy, would you please?
I'd like to know that we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll adjourn, board. Thank you all. In all this, thank you all for standing up.